Yep. Are you good?
Yeah.
Alrighty, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call the Thursday, April 23, Citrus Heights City Council meeting to order. So, welcome to any of you who are out there watching us. We'll start the meeting off with the flag salute, the pledge of allegiance. So if you would all join me, placing your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. We need to work on that. Timing, yeah. It's usually better in a group setting so people can blend together. That's okay. Alright, Amy Van, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. Thank you, Amy. And if you'd read the video statement.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, April 27th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. So, the first item up, approval of the agenda. Again, the only recommendation I'm going to make is that we move the city manager report up to the beginning, right before, next item, before presentations.
I move approval of the agenda with that one change. Second.
Alright, so Bruins made the motion, Middleton made the second. Amy, can we take a quick roll call vote?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you, Amy. Alright, so we'll jump before the presentations, we'll turn it over to city manager Chris Boyd for update on anything COVID related for the city. Thank you, Chris.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Alright, Mayor, council members, good evening. You know, things continue to run smoothly in terms of city operations and service delivery here at the city. Again, our staff is just doing a tremendous job and the community is as well. We continue to do our part to stop the spread of COVID-19 and plan for the gradual reopening of our local economy. So, we have pivoted now in our discussions and our work on really the subject of reopening, not only, you know, just city services and what that means in terms of city staff, but really throughout the community while working daily with our county and state partners. Advocating for our city at the state and national level is really key to our recovery. Unfortunately, cities were left out of the federal $484 billion interim emergency spending package this week. Federal government failed to include direct and flexible aid to local governments, really of all sizes below populations of 500,000 to help address revenue shortfalls and increased expenses due to COVID-19. So, while assistance to local governments will be included in the fourth spending package as we are hearing, in the meantime, the city is supporting H.R. 6467, the Community Relief Act, which really focuses on cities with populations under 500,000. Conversations at the state level are also beginning to acknowledge the impact, excuse me, of COVID-19 has had on local governments, and that must continue to provide essential services like public safety. So, we are seeing a growing awareness at legislative levels, really at the state and at the federal level, but we continue to monitor these financial issues from a legislative perspective as they unfold and while we advocate. So, Mayor, those are my updates specific to COVID-19. I would like to take this opportunity during the city manager report to also really publicly acknowledge and thank our chief of police, Ron Lawrence. I think as most know, he just completed his term as the California Police Chiefs Association this last Monday. Normally, that comes with a lot of fanfare, but in light of the circumstances, it lacks some ceremony. So, I want to make sure that we highlight his work here. It was a difficult year in some ways for law enforcement, and advocacy is a key role that the association plays. The California Police Chiefs represent over 330 municipalities where over 80% of Californians live. So, it's a big job to lead that agency and really lead the public safety fight down at the Capitol. And so, he really did a phenomenal job doing that and brought great credit and representation to our city right here at home while doing so. So, I do want to thank and congratulate and acknowledge our very own Chief Lawrence for a job well done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Appreciate that. And yes, our kudos as well go out to Chief Lawrence on that occasion. I know you didn't get the big dinner and speech, but that's okay. You're, you know, you're behind the scenes and doing well. The only other thing I want to add to that, and Chief, you did a great job. As city manager said, it was a tough year, but I think we'd be remiss. One of the reasons you were able to do such a fantastic job and to approach your time there was because you had a good backup staff here in the city. So, Ed Commander Jason Russo, Commander Alex Turcot, and Assistant Chief Gina Anderson, who recently left but was promoted to police chief down in Newark, if I recall correctly. So, you know, it's always good to know that when you're away advocating on behalf of the rest of the state, Citrus Heights was still in good hands. So, I also wanted to call that out, but certainly don't want to take anything away from the job you did because it was. Quite frankly, the police across the state, across the country are under attack for various reasons. And it, you know, it's funny now, we depend on them more than ever. So, you know, we can't thank you enough for what you did, and you did it professionally, honorably, and heck, you made us look good. So, thank you for that, Chief.
Thank you very much. I echo your statement. It's a team effort, and I'm proud of our entire team and our city council and city manager. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do that. It was the highlight of my career. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Alright, next item, Amy.
The next item is presentation number four, a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 2020 as Building Safety Month.
Is that going to be Greg?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening here and members of the council. Greg Anderson, chief building official. It's that time again. It's Building Safety Month. It's the month of May. It's about safer buildings and safer communities and a safer world. Next slide, please. So, a little bit about Building Safety Month. Building Safety Month is a yearly international campaign that takes place in May to raise awareness about building safety. This campaign reinforces the need for adoption of modern, regularly updated building codes and helps individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe, sustainable structures. Next slide, please. So, all communities need codes to protect their citizens from disasters and fires, weather-related events, structural collapse. Building codes are society's best way of protecting homes, offices, schools, manufacturing facilities, stores, and entertainment venues. Code officials work day in and day out to keep the public safe. Next slide, please. So, this year's gonna be a little bit different. In the past years, the building department has always provided as much outreach as we can. We usually present to schools and neighborhood associations, and we have a really unique display in City Hall where folks come down and get a lot of helpful informations and safety tips. With COVID-19 this year, that's not gonna be taking place. So, we're gonna do what we can to get creative with our social media. So, stay tuned. We will be getting stuff out weekly as we have four weeks of Building Safety Month, and there's four different monthly, weekly themes. And we'll try to get as much as we can out there as far as the safety tips and information for you. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Greg. Alright, so I'm gonna read an abbreviated proclamation specific to Building Safety Month. So, whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of the community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials. Wow, I can see you wearing a cape there, Greg. Who assure us as a safe, efficient, livable building that is, that are essential to America's prosperity and... Whereas safer buildings, safer communities, safer world, the theme for the Building Safety Month 2020 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industries. Industry, sorry. And therefore, the city council does hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 as Building Safety Month. Guess this means you're not gonna have a barbecue in May, huh?
Unfortunately, not.
Okay. Yeah, that just means I'm cooking. I appreciate that, but...
Watch each other eat.
We'll wait till we get back up and maybe we can have a delayed barbecue.
Yes, thank you very much.
Build their safety. Thank you, Greg. Alright, next item, comments by council members and regional board updates. You're Mr. Bruins, I'm gonna start with you.
Okay, don't have a whole lot to report. We did have a regional sand conference call this week and pretty much took a look at the financial, the budgets going forward for both regional sand and Sacramento area sewer district. The good news is the rates are stable. We don't anticipate a rate increase even with the impact of COVID-19. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Genie Bruins, Portia Middleton, how about you next?
Okay, well, not really much to report, but I did want to point out that the Citrus Heights Youth and Family Services is doing their senior spotlight, and they're asking that members of the community who have graduating seniors send out photo accomplishments and future plans of their graduates and to email them to jayshafer@citrusheights.net so that we can celebrate the tremendous accomplishment of our local graduates, even though that we're all, you know, they don't get the normal fanfare that they have.
Good idea. Thank you, Portia. Brett Daniels, if you would, please.
Thank you. Just, we had a meeting today, the air board. We talked about the proposed budgets and the impact, you know, that things are having right now, and then also passed a direction given to the staff that moves towards a process of elimination of gas, natural gas into homes in the future and new homes, new homes. So, it's something that's kind of controversial and whatnot, but it moves, I guess, towards goals that have been set by the state and forced down on the local municipalities and counties and stuff. Other than that, just the same as far as hoping everybody stays safe and uses precautions, but also gets out and gets some fresh air. Please, please, please find a way to shop local and especially our restaurants and stuff like that. And let's hopefully eliminate as much as possible closures within Citrus Heights. It really does make a difference on not only those businesses, but don't forget, that's how our city is run as these sales tax that flow through those businesses come back to the city, and that's how we provide services. So, please don't forget that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Vice Mayor Miller.
Well, it seems like all I've accomplished over the past two weeks is yard work. I have nothing to report and have nothing on the calendar for the next two weeks. So, that's the end of my report.
Alright, mine won't be too long. One, the, there's a commercial corridor task force attached to SAGCAG, and we met this week and it's, you know, some of the board members, but more importantly, some builders, some investment companies, some bankers, some other things to basically, you know, talk about trying to revitalize commercial corridors. And I found the most interesting thing out of that conversation and talking to some of not only just the commercial developers, but some of the smaller financial institutions, they were saying, you know, as we look forward to what's being built, they said, you know, in their opinion, almost everything has to be some type of mixed use. And they cited the example, perfect example of, you know, restaurants. You know, how many of them may or may not be here, you know, six months from now. But they also mentioned the Cheesecake Factory, you know, national company that when this hit, went to the landlords and says, you know what, we're not gonna pay rent until we can open back up. So, they're, you know, they're looking at, they don't want to have one straight commercial, you know, straight housing. They want to have a mix of it going forward. They said that's the only way that they can guarantee. That's the first time I've heard, you know, those entities talking like that. So, I found that very interesting. The chief already, the chief, the former chief, the city manager already brought up the situation with, you know, our current chief leaving as president of Cal Chiefs. So, that has already been done. Library board met today, and we will continue to keep the libraries closed based on the stay-at-home order. We are looking at ways to, you know, how we can, when that's lifted, if you will, to bring that about. There are, you know, some people out there, myself included, who kind of feel that that's actually an essential business from the standpoint. A lot of people out there, one, don't have internet, two, might not have a computer. You know, if they're having to file for unemployment, they used to be able to go straight to a library at no cost and be able to do that. A lot of people are at home more, so they're looking to, you know, the checkouts of electronic books has gone through the roof. But at the end of the day, you know, regular books are still fine. And so, we're looking at, you know, how, when the stay-at-order is lifted, how we can, you know, not only open the libraries, open them safely for not only the employees of the library, but the customers. So, more to come on that. And that was really it from my end. So, next item, Amy.
Next item is public comment. I do not have any public comment cards for this portion of the meeting. I do have five public comment cards for item 13.
Okay, so we'll take them at that time. Great. Next item.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, seven, and eight.
Move approval.
Second.
So, we have Vice Mayor Miller moving the motion, Genie Bruins seconding it. Amy, if we could get a vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you, Amy. Motion passes 5-0. Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number nine. The subject is annexation of the Mitchell Farms subdivision into landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district 03-01, zone three. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution annexing the Mitchell Farms subdivision into landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district 0301, zone three.
And Amy, this, I know there's a vote on this as well. Is there a presentation by Mr. Hodgkins with this?
Staff has a presentation, and following the public hearing, I'll open the ballots and report the results.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is city engineer Stu Hodgkins. Actually, this particular item, Arda Lynn will present. We have two items on the agenda tonight for the Mitchell Farms project. She's gonna take this first one, and I will take the second one. I did want to point out that as we go through these two items, if it is the council's pleasure, we have Dave Mitchell from Sunrise Wreckin' Park on the line with us. We also have Kevin Webb and David Judy representing Watt Communities and KB Homes respectively. If you have any questions for either of those gentlemen tonight as well.
Great. Thanks.
So, I'll leave it to Arda Lynn.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Arda Lynn Flores, and tonight's item before you is basically the second step in the process of annexing the Mitchell Farms subdivision into the landscape maintenance and assessment district. Now, let me share with you quickly, just to give you guys. Okay, so the Mitchell Farms, as you know, is just north of the Sunrise Mall, right here. Hang on. There we go. And so, just north of Arcadia Drive and west of Fair Oaks Boulevard. So, the, so the, the area that we are trying to annex into one of our city's landscape and lighting maintenance assessment district would be the open space that basically splits the subdivision to the north half and the south half of Mitchell Farms. This open space is basically within the 100-year floodplain, so it is not developable for residential lots to be used. So, this was a great opportunity to have an open space developed. When staff was looking at this during its entitlements, we basically, the developer basically had two choices. This open space, because of the restrictions of the floodplain, could not be developed. And so, this would be reserved as open space, and the HOA would end up, it is private property, and the HOA would be maintaining that. So, to make the property, you know, viable and useful, it was proposed that perhaps we can make this a public land. And in order to do that, the Sunrise Wreckin' Parks District would actually need help funding to keep, you know, this large open space as part of one of their parks. So, when this subdivision is built out and the park improvements are in place, the developer is planning to transfer this Lot A open space to the Sunrise Wreckin' Parks District. And I kind of just put this together just so you guys can kind of see how this will benefit just the connectivity with all of our other open space areas. Several years back, the Sunrise Wreckin' Parks District improved the Arcade Creek Parks Reserve here, which a lot of our residents enjoy. And then we have here a proposed, it's upcoming, the city is part of the Greenway Project, which is a community multi-jurisdictional project. And so, Mitchell Farms kind of just fits right in because it'll help connect everything to Tempo Park and then further up with the Greenway Project. So, with that, Sunrise Wreckin' and the city were agreeable to take on this green space as a public space once this is all done. Let me stop sharing that. Oops. Technical difficulty here. There we go. Okay, and so, I've got a few motions here. Okay, so, in accordance, so now, as part of the approval of the tentative map, the city conditioned Mitchell Farms subdivision to annex this open space into one of our existing assessment districts. And that would help also the Sunrise Parks District be able to maintain this open space. Otherwise, they would not be able to accept this as public space and open space. So, in accordance with the code, on March 9th, 2020, city clerk mailed out ballots to the effective property owners, which is KB Homes and Watt Communities. And on March 26th, city council approved the resolution to initiate this process to annex and set April 23rd, 2020 as a date for the required public hearing. So, here we are tonight. The city clerk also published this public notice in the newspaper on April 12th, 2020. City council is now asked to convene a public hearing to receive public comment on this proposed annexation. And upon closing the public hearing, the city clerk shall open the tabula and tabulate the ballots received and report this to city council. So, if there is not a majority protest to the annexation, staff recommends that city council approve the annexation of Mitchell Farms subdivision into lighting and landscaping maintenance district 0301 as zone three. And LMAD 0301 is basically our Stock Ranch existing assessment district in which it had similar features to this project. So, I am available if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you, Arda Lynn. Any questions before I open the public hearing, Arda Lynn? Alright, so I'll open the public hearing, Amy. I know you said you only had speaker sheets for number 13, but has anything else come in?
No, I have not received any other public comment.
Alright, did either Watt Communities or KB Homes wish to make any statement? Okay, so Amy, I'm guessing you've got two whole ballots there that you need to open and give us the results. Hopefully, it's not a 1-1. So, I'll let you open them and read to, I'll close the public hearing. And then I'll let you open the ballots.
Okay. Okay, I have tabulated the ballots received and not withdrawn, and 100% were in support of the annexation of land to landscape and lighting maintenance assessment district 0301, zone three. And zero were in opposition of the annexation. Therefore, there is not a majority protest, and if the city council would like to take action, they are free to do so.
Great. So, just one question before I ask the council, what's the pleasure? I just want to make sure, either Stuart or Arda Lynn, that I understand. So, I get we're putting it into the landscape maintenance district, but, you know, it's a little ways away from Stock Ranch. I just want to make sure that the funding that comes from the homes around there will be designated for there and won't impact Stock Ranch or vice versa. People in Stock Ranch won't be paying for stuff around them that's going over to this area. Is that how I understand?
I will address that, Mayor. Absolutely, all zones for various districts, we have several districts in the city with multiple zones. Each zone is accounted for independently, and the monies brought in go to those zones specifically.
So, the district is the overlying factor. Zone three specifically addresses the Mitchell Farms as opposed to Stock Ranch. Got it?
That is correct.
Alright, thank you for that clarification. Alright, what's the pleasure of the council?
With that in mind, I would like to move that we adopt resolution, the resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights to annex the Mitchell Farms subdivision into landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district 0301, zone three.
Great. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Portia made the second, Genie made the motion. Amy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you. Alright, next item, please.
The next item, regular calendar, item number 10. The subject is approval of the final subdivision map. The subject is Approval of the Final Subdivision Map and Subdivision Improvement Agreement for Mitchell Farms subdivision. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement for Mitchell Farms.
All right, it's my turn, I take it to you, yes.
Yep, I'm on tap for this particular one. Thank you for your time. This, as you all know, the Mitchell Farm, the tentative map for the Mitchell Farms development was approved back in August of 2018. And that tentative map took the existing almost 56 acres of land, and it's proposing to divide that into 258 individuals' properties. Pardon me?
Call them back.
Yeah, I don't use the landline ever, so it's unusual to have it ring. What we're bringing before you tonight is approval of the final subdivision map and a subdivision improvement agreement. And the purpose, we're moving forward with this at this time. The developer has requested recording of the map prior to the final improvements being completed and accepted. They've already begun construction, but they will not be done for several more months. But they want to move forward with recording and working through the Department of Real Estate and so forth. And to do that, we're asking them to execute a subdivision improvement agreement, which requires them to bond for the improvements going forward. And once the bonds are in place and the agreement is executed, we can then agree to release the map for final recording. At this point, if you don't have any other questions, this is a fairly simple act. We'll approve the map and approve the subdivision improvement agreement with a single resolution. There are two considerations that we're going to ask be built into a motion. The current situation has basically delayed the providing of the appropriate improvement bond for, to go along with the subdivision improvement agreement. Additionally, we have been working with the developer and have done a staged approval of the improvement plans, and we are working on the second phase of those improvement plans. They are not yet approved. So we're asking that the council basically have a conditional approval this evening that directs myself, as the city engineer, to not release the map until such time that the, one, the subdivision improvement agreement and the improvement bond is in place and is provided to us to the satisfaction of the city. And two, that the improvement plans for the second phase, which is the park and open space area with the drainage components in that, are approved by the city and the Sunrise Park and Recreation District. On that event, what we've done is prepared a specific recommendation or motion that will ask that you approve verbatim. I've worked with Ryan to develop this this evening, and it will read into the record the two additional conditions. And with that, the council's pleasure, if you have any questions.
And in addition to what Mr. Hodgkin said, we have been in communication with the other side, and they also are agreeable, we believe, to this language too, so it wouldn't be new to them.
I realize it's a fairly long, wordy motion, but we'd appreciate it if you would read the full content.
Right, so just a quick follow-up, you know, the delay, and I get it's probably, you know, pandemic-related, et cetera, but I just want to make sure that's what it is and it isn't something, some other underlying condition. It's just things are backed up, you know, half the people aren't at work right now. So is that what's kind of leading to the delay in obtaining the bond, et cetera?
For, from our conversations with both developing parties, that is the situation that has slowed down the approval of the bond. The approval of the improvement plans has just been a back-and-forth process between staff and the design team for the developers, and we're in process and getting close on that.
Okay, great. Work in progress, appreciate it. If there's no questions or comments from the council, what's the pleasure? And I'm taking it our city attorney would like the resolution read as is on the screen into the record.
Correct.
Who's up for reading?
Well, I can make the motion.
I, go ahead, Steve.
I move that we approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, approving the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement for Mitchell Farms subdivision and direct the city engineer not release the final map for recording until such a time that the city determines the developer has submitted the improvement security required in accordance with the subdivision improvement agreement, and the city has received and approved the final drainage and park open space improvement plans for the project.
Great, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
We'll second.
So Jeannie Bruins seconds, Vice Mayor Miller made the motion, Amy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. All right, thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Next item, Amy.
The next item is item number 12. The subject is Agreement with Sunrise Marketplace for Supplemental Police, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Item number 11. The subject is Acceptance of Department of Public Health Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement Grant. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving an agreement and accepting project funding for the state grant and funding for an additional police officer position with the California Department of Public Health and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Great, so it looks like Commander Russo and Lieutenant Fry will be making the presentation, so welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us get set up here real quick. All right, good evening, council and mayor. We are here to present this first item, actually, both of these items that you're going to see back-to-back are going to be presentations. I am Commander Russo, I have Lieutenant Chris Fry, and then I also have Lieutenant Chad Morris. They'll be providing presentations. The first one we talked about is a tobacco grant. This grant is a fully funded position that we were awarded. To accept these funds, we are going to ask for you to accept this resolution, accepting the funds. This will be a full-time employee, an additional employee to the police department that will both provide education, awareness, and prevention for youth tobacco prevention. And Chris Fry will be here to present the details of the grant, but I just wanted to let you know that both this position and the subsequent position are not anticipated to affect the general fund and are fully funded by the programs that we're talking about, one being a grant and one being a marketplace officer that is also paid by the PBIT. So with that, I'm going to turn this over in the presentation to Lieutenant Chris Fry.
If you're there, Lieutenant, you're on mute.
You're good to go.
I thank you, Commander Russo. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Lieutenant Chris Fry with our Investigative Services Division. I currently supervise our General Investigations Unit, our Youth and Family Services Unit, and our Special Investigations Unit. Tonight, I have the distinct privilege to provide you with a presentation on a tobacco and vaping prevention grant that was awarded to our department from the California Department, a Public Health Food and Drug Branch. Funding for this particular grant was made possible through the California Healthcare Reserve Prevention Tobacco Act of 2016 in association with Proposition 56. This particular grant is called the STATE Grant. STATE stands for Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement. The mission of this grant is to reduce the use and illegal sales of tobacco products to individuals under the age of 21, and that's going to be done through effective enforcement and education. One of the objectives of this grant is to educate the youth within our community about the dangers that are associated with use of tobacco products. By reaching our youth at a younger age, we have the ability to help prevent any type of addiction or dependency. This also allows us the opportunity to help to prevent any additional health concerns that are attributed to the use of tobacco products. Some of which include slow lung growth, cancer in the lungs, the mouth, the stomach, changes in the appetite, and increased binge drinking. And as you can see, there's several other health concerns associated with the use of tobacco products. Now, on a national level, the Center for Disease Control conducted a national youth tobacco survey in 2019, and what they found from the survey was that if cigarette smoke continued at the current rate among youth in our country, a little over five and a half million of today's Americans that are under the age of 18 years of age would die early from some type of smoking-related illness. What that equates to is about one out of every 13 Americans that are age 17 or younger that are alive today would be affected. I'd like to direct your attention to the bar graph on the slide that you're looking at right now. What you can see is a little over 31% of the youth that took part in the survey by the CDC indicated that they used any type of tobacco product. What was alarming to me was the three individual products stated, which are cigarettes, cigars, and e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes has definitely grown in popularity over the last couple of years, and as you can see from the CDC survey, it's a little over 27% of the youth in our country that are currently utilizing e-cigarettes. So in preparation for this grant, our Youth and Family Services Division had to do some research. We wanted to find out what we were looking at here in Citrus Heights. First, we wanted to find out how many students and youth within our community we had that we were dealing with. Well, we determined that we had an estimated 11,000 households in our city that have children that are under 18 years of age. That equates to about 32% of our total population. And in our schools, which includes our elementary, our middle, and high schools, we have nearly 6,000 students. So with this, we decided to do a little data mining. We wanted to find out how many nicotine-related incidents that we've investigated or we've partnered with safe schools to look into. We went back two years, and what we found is in 2018 and 2019, we had 34 nicotine-related incidents that were investigated by law enforcement. And then in this current school year, in 2019 and 2020, we had 29. But it should be noted that the statistic of 29 incidents only reflects the date range of July 1st of last year through February 20th of this year. So as you can see, we were on track to exceed the previous year. Part of the preparation for the grant itself and the stat and data mining process for the application was to find out what the students' thoughts were and conduct a survey. So our Youth and Family Services Division conducted a survey with both of our high schools, both Mesa Verde and San Juan. The survey was provided to students between the ages of 13 and 19 years old, excuse me, 13 and 19 years of age. And it asked several different questions, but I have two of them tonight that I want to share with you, because part of the survey was basically looking at three things that really highlighted the entire survey. One was the usage, the second is availability to the students, and then the third was any type of dependency issues. One of the questions that was asked on the survey was whether or not the students had witnessed any type of illegal smoking, whether it was on campus or near the campus. And as you can see from the results, 78% of our students had seen smoking on campus, whereas 53% of the students that took the survey indicated that they had seen smoking appear, or excuse me, seen smoking occur off-campus or near campus, rather. And likewise, we also asked our students how easy it was for them to buy tobacco products in Citrus Heights. As you can see, we had 29% say that it was easy for them to buy tobacco products in Citrus Heights, and 16% said it was somewhat easy. So part of this grant, we have several objectives that we're going to accomplish. One, we'll be providing training for our own law enforcement officers on the laws and enforcement. We're going to provide training for business owners on the certain laws about selling to underage youth. We're going to provide training for parents on both the laws and the health risks associated with tobacco use. We're going to get into our middle schools and our high schools to provide presentations and attend assemblies, so that way we can pass on to our students the dangers and the health risks associated with tobacco use. We're also going to have print and social media campaigns. We're going to send out press releases. We'll conduct shoulder tap operations with police explorers that are eager to be future officers with our department. And we'll also conduct undercover operations at businesses that we suspect or that we know have engaged in continued violations. And then what we're also going to do is install vaping detection devices at our high schools and locker rooms. What will happen with that is we'll work with safe schools and the San Juan Unified School District to determine the best locations amongst the various campuses within our city and determine the best locations to install those vaping devices. So as far as the award, we were offered and awarded a very generous award from the Department of Public Health. This basically falls into three different categories. And the first one is personnel. As Commander Russo mentioned earlier, we were awarded $170,000 maximum for each fiscal year starting in 2021 and will extend through 2021, 22, and 22, 23. This will cover the full salary and benefit package for an officer without any anticipated impact on the general fund. The second category is operations. We were awarded $3,000 for a Meridia Interactive Audio, or excuse me, Audience Response System. And what that is, is basically when our YFS team goes out to conduct presentations or attend assemblies, these are devices that we can pass out, so that way the audience that's attending these particular assemblies can be interactive, and they'll have a handheld device to be able to answer questions, and everybody else that's attending these seminars will be able to see the results on the board in real time. We also were awarded $5,000 for educational materials that'll cover posters, brochures, placards, anything we need to get that message out. And then for equipment, we were fortunate to receive $43,000 for a wrapped outreach vehicle that's branded for education and prevention for this particular grant. I mentioned earlier about the vape detection devices. We were awarded $40,000 for vape detection devices, and we're looking at approximately $4,000 per device, and that includes installation, so that'll give us approximately 10 devices that we can install in our schools. And then finally, we were awarded $5,000 to investigate safely, for equipment, for investigating purposes during this operation. That don't include cameras, laptops, or quarters of lighting. And then finally, as you can see with this particular grant, our main focus is to make sure that we get into the community with our youth and start the education process early to prevent any type of addiction or dependency issues. If we do this, we'll make a positive impact with the youth in our community to ensure that they have a healthy future. And before I turn it back over, I want to recognize the driving force behind this grant and the unit that this particular person supervises. Sergeant Janet Schaefer was the driving force behind this particular grant, and her staff within the Youth and Family Services Unit did an incredible job with doing the research and all the data mining to prepare the application for us to be successful in gaining this particular award. So at this time, I would respectfully request the council to accept the resolution, to accept the funds provided by the grants, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, Lieutenant Fry. Any questions for Commander Russo or Lieutenant Fry?
This is Jeannie, I've got a question. Thank you, Lieutenant Fry, for your presentation. Are you finding that the bulk of the smoking incidences that have been recorded in statistics is vaping rather than straight cigarette smoking? Is there a breakdown to that level?
I don't have the breakdown on that, but I can tell you that vaping is definitely the most popular of the tobacco products that are being utilized with the students right now. But as far as the breakdown from the results that I provided tonight, I don't have that.
Well, I mean, I don't need, don't mean specific numbers, but I think you've answered my question, that is that the majority of it is basically vaping?
Yes, it is. There's definitely an increased popularity with vaping and vaping devices.
Thank you.
Great. So no questions, Lieutenant and Commander, just a request that it looks like when, you know, with that $43,000 for the wrapped vehicle, that would be a new vehicle to us, not the cost of wrapping it because it's certainly not that expensive. But, you know, we have several small businesses within Citrus Heights that do that in terms of the wraps for cars and boats, et cetera. So I would hope that once we designate that vehicle, that we can keep the wrap job, if you will, local to Citrus Heights. That would be great.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. We already plan on keeping that locally. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One more question. What may be obvious, but what is the shoulder tap procedure? What is that?
So we have a lot of eager explorers that obviously want to become police officers. When we have identified businesses that we believe or through investigations, we determine that they have been selling tobacco products to those that are under 21 years of age, we'll conduct undercover operations. And in this case, we have explorers that are interested in doing that. They're motivated. They're 18 years old, and they want to go ahead and help out in these type of operations. So they would help us out to find out whether or not these businesses are actually selling to underage youth in our community.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move it.
So I heard Portia move it. Brett, did I hear?
Yep, I'll second it.
Brett, second it. Amy, if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. I think it's Commander Russo, Lieutenant Morris, and maybe Lieutenant Fry for the next one.
Yes, so the next item is regular calendar, item 12. The subject is agreement with Sunrise Marketplace for supplemental police services in Sunrise Marketplace Business Improvement District. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing a contract with Sunrise Marketplace for police services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Lieutenant Chad Morris of the Citrus Heights Police Department, and tonight, as Commander Russo mentioned, I'm here to speak with you about a proposal that was made by the Sunrise Marketplace Corporation to add an additional officer. This would be a marketplace specialist that would service the entire S&amp;P area, and this would be fully funded by the Sunrise Marketplace Corporation and have zero impact to our general fund. So obviously, the purpose is ultimately the Sunrise Marketplace Corporation Board of Directors met, and they have a, they're desirous to have a dedicated officer patrolling the entire S&amp;P area. That would basically be a specialist and liaison with all of the business owners and provide a higher, a high-quality service based on the relationship and this person being a specialist. They're looking for this officer to begin service on May 1st, 2020. One of the key focuses of the businesses in the S&amp;P area, obviously, is a focus on quality of life and providing a safer shopping experience for customers and folks that frequent the area and the entire business district. From a PD standpoint, we look at this as being a great benefit as far as being able to really focus in on providing crime prevention strategies to these businesses who may be experiencing a variety of challenges. And also, one key piece would be a collaboration with the existing security patrols that are already working and operating within the business district. It's be a great opportunity for us to share intel and provide better resources and a better, a higher level of service to really combat some of these challenges that are occurring and obviously working with them as these issues evolve and so on and so forth. So obviously, as we know, Sunrise Marketplace is a centrally located commercial district in the city. It's comprised of over 400 businesses and spans a 10-block area approximately. The city, we recognize, obviously, the S&amp;P is a crown jewel. It's an economic hub, if you will, for the city. And so because of the significance, we want to make sure that we ensure optimal police protection, and we do so to keep folks safe that frequent that area so they'll keep coming back. Just quickly give you a visual representation of the S&amp;P area. It's like, again, it's comprised of an approximate 10-block area that encompasses over 400 stores. The main concerns of these businesses within the S&amp;P are some of the shoplifting continues to be a major concern, petty theft, and obviously, we've all heard about it. But organized retail crime is a growing trend and one that's significantly hamstringing a lot of these businesses due to the significant loss that it entails. Another issue that we've been combating is loitering, some vandalism. There's been unfortunately some robbery and assaults, but ultimately, what this all encompasses is really just providing the perception of safety to customers that are going to frequent this area and be customers and spend money in our city. The cost of this S&amp;P specialist is going to be covered, again, by the Sunrise Marketplace Corporation, and this would be for one officer, 40 hours a week approximately, 52 weeks a year. The cost of this officer is not to exceed in year 1, 176,000, year 2, 182,000, and year 3, 187,000. And obviously, these increases are based on speculative benefit increases that we've built in to make sure that this is covered by Sunrise Marketplace Corporation in their through this agreement. So you may ask yourself if there's a, is going to be any impact negatively to the PD or the ability for us to provide city service. This contract, the way it's devised, will not impair any of our ability to provide general law enforcement, any of our general law enforcement responsibilities, and will not result in any type of a loss to our operational efficiency or readiness. The great benefit of having this S&amp;P specialist operating in this area is obviously enhanced police protection services based on the fact that this person would be a specialist for this entire area and know exactly all the intimate details as far as what's going on. And obviously, we can offer a crime prevention education directly to these businesses. We can do that now, but obviously, in some cases, we're spread to the point where this would allow us to offer much more dedicated service to these businesses, and it really helped them with the specific issues that they're experiencing. When I think of this, I think of things like SEPTED, our Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, which is hugely effective. And obviously, we can tailor it exactly to the things that these businesses are experiencing that are creating challenges for them. And again, I mentioned this earlier, but the collaboration with existing security personnel will be huge for us just based on the very specific details and intelligence that we can gather and just really make the service that much more robust as far as the information sharing. So with that, tonight, I would respectfully ask the council adopt this resolution, giving the city manager authorization to execute the proposed contract with the Sunrise Marketplace Corporation. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lieutenant Morris. Any questions from the council?
I have a question. Hi, thank you for your presentation, Lieutenant Morris. Would this officer be available to respond to an incident that required additional police response if there was another officer not available?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that. We actually have that. We discussed that, and it's built into the contract that this person would be dedicated to the S&amp;P area, but in the event that there was some sort of a significant call within the city that required additional officer support, that officer would be able to come out of the S&amp;P area, assuming that this issue is occurring elsewhere in the city, and respond to assist with whatever call is happening at that time. And then once the call has been, is secured or everyone is safe, then obviously, this officer can go back to their S&amp;P duties. But yes, that is laid out in there so that we do have that ability to pull that officer for a short period of time if needed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is that officer going to operate kind of like a pop officer or is just mainly, you know, more like a patrol officer?
No, you actually hit the nail on the head. It's gonna, our vision for this is basically they are patrol officer, but they've got basically a very strong pop mindset, and that's exactly who we're looking for to fill this position, is making sure that this person who's got a pop mindset and they are going to be the quintessential specialist for this area, have the relationship-building skills to work with these businesses directly, and really devise crafted plans that will help each business with whatever problem or challenge that they're experiencing at that time. So yes, it's going to be very much like a pop officer.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I think this is a really great idea. So I've sat in a couple of Sunrise Marketplace board meetings, the concept was brought up in their very much of the year, so I think it's good for them and good for us. So I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution authorizing a contract with Sunrise Marketplace for police services.
Great.
Second.
Jeannie, move the item. Brett, second it. Amy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye.
Next item, Amy.
The next item is number 13. The subject is allocation of emergency funding to the city's nonprofit partners providing essential services, including food, household items, homeless services, domestic violence services, and other needs in response to the COVID-19 crisis. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to make allocations of emergency funding to the city's nonprofit partners, providing the services that I just mentioned for the COVID-19 crisis.
Welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stephanie Cotter, Community Development Department. As Amy mentioned, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the CARES Act, specifically a little bit of funding the city received as to its CDBG program as part of the CARES Act legislation. So the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or CARES Act, was signed by President Trump on March 27th, and of that $2 trillion stimulus plan, $150 billion was allocated to state and local governments, and more specifically, Citrus Heights will receive about $376,000. HUD is supposed to disperse the funding by April 26th. They've released some of the details, but they haven't released the final guidelines. It's similar to regular CDBG regulations in that it's reimbursement-based, and it has to benefit low and moderate-income households. In addition, these special CDBG funds, they don't have the normal 15% cap on public services, which is really exciting because that makes them a lot more flexible in their use. There's an abbreviated public review process in order to allocate and review projects. And the last part is that it really has to address the effects of COVID-19, and it can be, you know, a range of effects, but it really needs to have a nexus to the coronavirus. So we've been talking with our nonprofits. Citrus Heights is really fortunate to have a lot of nonprofits that fill a really big need in Citrus Heights, and in recent weeks, they've really seen the need like they've never seen before. So we reached out to all of them, and we heard three key things, you know, just the really rapid increase in community need. And the number one need among all of them is really financial support so that they can do what they really need to do in order to meet the demand. And we'll go through each of the requests, and then I'll show you a table of all the requests together. These last two, the service delivery models need to change. A lot of them are offering contactless delivery for the food banks and, you know, remote working, and so there's different ways that the nonprofits have adapted, and we're working with them to modify their scopes so that way they can continue to operate. And the last one is the significant revenue loss from their inability to do their normal fundraisers. We're partnering with our amazing communications team to really promote any fundraisers they have and help all of our nonprofits in this area as well. So first, our emergency food bank, the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry, they've seen an increase of 40 to 50% in new clients, and at the same time, they've seen a 90% reduction in their regular volunteers. They have a shortage of food and material and supplies. It's mostly food, household items, and then they do need some additional supplies because they've had to move their operations to the parking lot to be more of a drive-up style. So those are their needs. Their request for three months is $30,000, and that would be for, you know, emergency operations and reimbursement-based for eligible expenses. Next, we have Weave. They used to have a domestic violence advocate embedded within the police department, but they've since transitioned to remote delivery, but they still are responding to all of the referrals from the police department. Like other agencies, they're experiencing a shortage of food and other supplies, including hotel stays for their clients. They need some new technology. We're going to work with them really on specifically, you know, to fine-tune this and get down to the details, but this is an overall view of what their needs are. And they're also experiencing a revenue loss because of their thrift store closing and fundraisers being canceled. Their request is also $30,000, and this is for three months.
Stephanie, just to clarify, is that $30,000 spread over three months for each of those two?
Yes, that's, thank you. Yes, that's correct. A total of $30,000 to last for a total of three months. So the campus-like ministries who operate our Sienna Center, they have transitioned from their after-school program to feeding the community. They're providing takeout dinners to the local community members three days a week, and they're hoping to increase this service to five days a week. They've also experienced, you know, as the others, a loss in fundraising revenue, and their request is for $15,750 for a total of three months. They did have a supplemental request for some grants for some of their participants to go to summer camps, but I'm not sure that that is going to be eligible because it has to have a nexus to the coronavirus. And so we're going to look into that and possibly bring that back as a phase-two request if the final guidelines do list it as an eligible expense. So lastly, the Sacramento Self-Up Housing, they contract with the city to provide the Citrus Heights Navigator, who's our full-time navigator that is currently funded by a combination of CDBG funds and general fund revenue. This fund is proposed to support that program and really get people off the street who are experiencing homelessness as they're especially vulnerable, and it's also important to slow the spread of COVID-19 so they can have access to, you know, places to sanitize and be clean, and at the same time, we can provide them with outreach services and support while they're there. So this fund could be used for motel vouchers or housing deposits and other things to support the navigator, like meals, transportation, laundry, and gift cards. And this could be for the people who are in the motels, but in addition to that, you know, just the people who are sheltering in place, who are experiencing homelessness if they're not necessarily in a large group, you know, we can deliver meals and supplies to them. So this would be something that she could access on a case-by-case basis, you know, in combination with our partners in the police department. And I want to thank Commander Russo and Lieutenant Morris and Sergeant Evans, who really helped put this proposal together. So as I said before, we're recommending a two-phased approach. You know, first is to get the money out quickly to our existing nonprofits because they're just really struggling to meet the current need. And second, HUD hasn't really released the final guidelines, and so we'd really like to look at those before we allocate the remainder of the funding in case we need to make any changes. So we estimate that this first round of funding would last through about July, and then we would come back to you in June or July to make recommendations on phase-two. And looking at that as, you know, possibly opening it up to all nonprofits and doing, you know, a public process, and I'm open to any suggestions that you have around that. And the estimated timeframe would be from August to December for that round of funding. So here's an overall look at all of the recommendations, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Stephanie? And Stephanie, I believe this was- And Stephanie, I believe this went through the Quality of Life Committee as well?
Thank you Mayor Slowey, yes, that is correct. This did go through the Quality of Life Committee.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, some comments. Is it okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. So in looking at these first three listed, they seem to be very much in my mind legitimately connected to the fallout of things that have happened and how we're trying to hopefully respond to help people. Whereas the fourth thing, which we're all a very strong supporter of the Navigator program, seems to be more of a, an action to look at a potential maybe, if you will. And I think we're just going a little heavy there because that program, I don't believe, has lost any funding. And you can please correct me if that's wrong. But this looks like it's just an increase of what we've already put into that program. Whereas the others are probably experiencing a loss of projected income that they thought would be coming in to help their organizations. And so I'm just a little concerned on going so heavy on the Navigator program when maybe people just haven't heard about this enough or we just haven't got that demand enough on those top three.
Yes, thank you. Those are good points. The supplemental fund for Navigator is a little bit different in that it's not only increasing, you know, what we're currently doing. It's providing something new that we don't have. We fund a position, but our Navigator doesn't have any resources. I should say she has very limited resources to really connect people to. And so this would be an opportunity for her to use where if there's somebody who is especially vulnerable to COVID and, you know, they can't get into another source of housing and they have pre-existing conditions, maybe we can put them in a motel for a few nights for respite. The other portion or the other thought behind it was that keeping people, enabling people to shelter in place and to not have to go into other areas because so many other services that used to provide food and other things to people experiencing homelessness are not operating right now. So they really are having a hard time sheltering in place as we are all supposed to be.
Great, thank you Stephanie. Any other questions or comments to staff?
Do we have, do we have public comment?
Yeah, I will get there.
I was gonna wait till after then.
Okay, Amy, I think you said you had five.
Yes.
Speakers that you wanted to read into the record.
Yes. Would you like me to do that now?
Please.
So the first public comment is from Scott Young with Sacramento Self-Help Housing. My name is Scott Young, Homeless Outreach Supervisor for Sacramento Self-Help Housing. I am speaking on behalf of emergency funding for additional homeless outreach and navigation services. The purpose of this funding would be in part to provide motel rooms for unhoused individuals and families living in Citrus Heights. The COVID-19 crisis is forcing communities to address the needs of the most vulnerable. Currently, those who are unhoused have no place to wash hands, practice good hygiene, or use the bathroom. They also struggle with effective practices like social distancing. Motel rooms will keep, will help keep this population safe and help prevent the contraction and spread of COVID-19. Offering people temporary shelter also means that the Citrus Heights Navigator and organizations like Citrus Heights Heart will have a much better opportunity to offer services and resources. Additionally, some of this funding would go to help people with moving costs such as deposits and first month's rent. I believe this funding could help many of Citrus Heights' homeless residents transition off the streets and into housing. I urge you to support this allocation of emergency funding for homeless services. The next is from Rocky Peterson. Thank you for considering additional CDBG support during this COVID-19 emergency. Sunrise Christian Food Ministry is an essential agency during this time. We are being asked to help supply food to many additional hurting families. At the same time, most of our elder support staff is having to shelter at home. So our needs have been to find food supplies whenever and wherever and to find support volunteers for the community. The volunteer support is working well. Many individuals are coming from an online service called Hands-on Sacramento and from our supporting churches. The food supply is a real and ongoing problem. Our regular sources from stores have been reduced to one to two cases of an item instead of the regular forty to fifty. So our costs have increased. Also, we are having to redesign our distribution system to a drive-through process. This has required pre-packing our food in boxes. So we have increased costs for food packaging, gloves, and face masks for customer and volunteer safety. Again, we thank you for your current CDBG support and for the possible increased support. Next is from Beth Hassett with Weave. Thank you to the Citrus Heights City Council and staff for allocating emergency funds to your nonprofit partners to provide essential services, including domestic violence services. During this pandemic, Weave has adapted its services to continue supporting survivors. We are still operating our twenty-four-seven support line and launched an online chat for those who cannot safely call. We are still housing clients in our residential programs and providing supportive services such as counseling, case management, and legal services over the phone. Our advocates who were embedded with Citrus Heights Police Department are still making follow-up calls to DV victims referred by the police department and providing ongoing emotional support and case management. These are important funds to assist with our operating costs, sheltering clients in hotels when safe to do so, and purchasing emergency supplies so we can continue to meet the needs of survivors. We appreciate the financial support. Next is John Foley with Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Sacramento Self-Help Housing has worked closely with the city and particularly with the police department to respond to the homelessness crisis and move people inside. The Homeless Assistance Resource Team originally pushed for the creation of this position and has been a strong partner. The ongoing efforts to provide support, including food and sanitation, help is making a difference. But actually moving people in off of the streets will be a game changer. We look forward to using motels right away and then assisting people to move on into their own permanent housing. Thank you for your leadership during this difficult times. The last is from Dan Palmer, the Executive Director with Campus Connection, and Julie Habib, the Sayonara Community Center Director. During the school year, the Citrus Heights Sayonara Center feeds an average of fifty children and youth daily after school. Currently, without any advertising, we are servicing sixty-five to ninety meals to the community each Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. San Juan Unified School District is providing free breakfast and lunch to the community, so we wanted to offer them dinner. The Sayonara Center desires to meet this gap in services and provide free meals to the families of the Sayonara Center and the surrounding community five days a week. We are also providing new books, coloring supplies, and pages for children and youth to assist them as they miss time from school. Our need for additional funding is twofold. First, we are requesting an additional ten thousand five hundred for our dinner service and staffing expenses. This funding will enable us to expand our dinner service to five days a week and include additional families as the need has grown in the last month from forty meals to an average of seventy-five. Second, we are requesting seven thousand for camps, activities, and excursions for the students of Sayonara Center. Campus Life Connection's annual spring fundraiser had to be canceled due to COVID-19. This fundraiser is how we fund a majority of the cost of summer activities for Sayonara Center students. These summer activities are life-changing and are something our students look forward to all year long. Thank you for your consideration of these needs represented by an additional seventeen thousand five hundred in CDBG funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. So that's all the public comment. Comments, questions from council and then the direction you want to go. Steve, you said you were gonna wait.
Yeah, Stephanie, I thought when we talked at the Quality of Life that the supplemental fund for the Navigator program to self-help housing, and maybe I got this wrong, but I thought there was some amount of effort going to help renters who are facing eviction during the COVID-19 pandemic. And they seem to be the most vulnerable and it would keep them from becoming homeless. I know we're pouring a lot of money into the homeless issue and it wasn't created by this virus. But again, I understand the need for safe sanitation and social distancing and all that, although some of the homeless seem to define social distancing to a T. Having said that though, I would like to see more go towards renters that are in crisis at this point. And I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, thank you. That's a really good point. We did talk about using this also for, you know, rental deposits and, you know, first and last month's rent so that way people could get into permanent housing because that's more cost-effective than paying for a motel nightly for them. And I think, you know, the intent of it is really to get people into permanent housing. And so if your direction is that you want it to also be used for rental assistance, I think that's absolutely something we can do. We did talk about, you know, discussing rental assistance in more detail in phase-two, kind of monitoring the statewide efforts and seeing if there's going to be anything passed at the state level for that. But I think that's a really good point and, yes, I agree with you. So we could incorporate that into the supplemental fund and we can also look at that for phase-two.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem looking at it for phase-two. I couldn't say yes to it for phase-one without having specifics. You know, I mean, what, you know, to me, there should be a limit per individual who applies towards that. I mean, I, without those details, I, I think that needs to wait till we have those details in phase-two personally.
That's a good point. We also don't really have a nonprofit partner identified for a robust rental assistance program at this point. And the thought was that, you know, we could pay the security deposit, you know, and maybe like the first month just to get people into housing for this fund. But you're right, we didn't look into it as, you know, the operations of it yet either.
Okay, thank you. So what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move approval.
All right, Portia moved approval. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Jeanie did a second. Roll call vote, please, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you. The five-zero motion carries. Congratulations to those entities. And I'm sure staff will be in contact to finalize all that stuff.
Thank you.
Next item, Amy.
The next item is Department Reports and I would like to turn it over to the city manager for an additional item.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't say that at the beginning.
Well, this item is probably more appropriate for the end. So just briefly, so the next council meeting is scheduled for May the fourteenth. So, and there are really, there are two meetings. One is a special, it's a hearing, abatement hearing scheduled for 5:00 PM that I need to have the council do on May fourteenth. And then there's the regular council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on May the fourteenth. Staff does not have sufficient agenda items for the regular meeting at 7:00 PM that otherwise could not be pushed to May the twenty-eighth. So in terms of concurrence, I'd like to recommend that we cancel the regular meeting on May the fourteenth at 7:00 PM. However, still hold the 5:00 PM meeting, which would be a hearing, not a meeting. It would be a 5:00 PM abatement hearing.
Okay. Anybody object to not meeting at seven o'clock? Didn't think I'd heard too many complaints about that. So just to be clear, we'll be having the abatement hearing at 5:00 PM on the fourteenth, but no regular meeting after that.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Any other, any other department reports?
No. The next item is items requested by councilmembers or any future agenda items.
Thank you. Anything from the council? All right, so this is the third meeting we've had via Zoom. You know, probably go through May and who knows about June. But I thank everybody for being here on time and, you know, everybody's looking good, everybody's taking showers, so that's good to see. So with that, unless I hear anything different, I'm gonna call the April twenty-third council meeting to an end and adjourn the meeting. So thank you all for joining.
Yes.
Yes.